Sit up here?
I might just go forward.
Jonathan.
Fred said about Dicky, sometimes Dicky leaves conservation, he don't come back.
Digging some river in Washington.
John?
Good evening. The Chair will reconvene the meeting already opened in executive session at 6:46. I apologize for the delay, we ran a little bit over there. Item three on the agenda tonight is the acceptance of minutes, minutes of July 25, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of July 25, 2016 as written.
Motion by Mr. Marcy, seconded by Mr. Fox, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Proposed abstentions, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, Michelle, just note that I was absent for that meeting, but I read the minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item four is appointments and resignations, a CMIR-PC delicate alternate tabled from July 25, 2016. Mr. Bell, you're conus. We have development on that?
Nothing further.
He's retabled, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll be on our next agenda in that case.
Is that a word, retable?
Has anyone here tonight under item number five who doesn't appear on our agenda that would like to be heard on another matter? Seeing and hearing none. We'll move on to item number six, Mr. Joseph.
Well, you know, this is Rob Romer. Rob, come on up, please. Rob Romer, Rob's Automotive. I know Peter, you had talked to him, so why don't you introduce him this time?
Rob, welcome.
Thank you.
Glad you could come. Rob Automotive is on Main Street, and we're giving businesses in town the opportunity to promote and talk a little bit about their business and what they do and what services they provide. So, Rob, why don't you go ahead and tell us a little bit about your business?
All right, well, we're a general repair shop. We work on hot rods as well. Most people recognize us for the hot rods. We have them out front all the time, but we do general repair, regular oil changes, brakes, alignments, pretty much everything. The only thing we don't get into is automatic transmissions and interior work. We've been open for about nine years now. Pretty much everyday work. A lot of the restoration stuff that we do is projects that people got started on and can't finish. So, we do all of those. We've got a couple of real big full restorations going on between both shops. My brother owns the body shop next door. So, we work back and forth on quite a bit. When the general repairs, all your regular maintenance, I said, oil changes, brakes, alignments, motor drive work, stuff like that.
How much of your business is general repairs versus restoration work?
The general repair right now is probably 60 percent of the business.
You buy vehicles just so you can restore them and sell them?
No.
You're just there, they're all project vehicles for somebody else?
Yeah, I'll customer vehicles.
Because I see, I go by there all the time. I always see vehicles for sale out there, is that...
Jack from Affordable Auto Sales, he sells the used cars off run.
No, I mean, I've seen like hot rods and...
We have them in the showroom once in a while for sale, not that often. Nothing that we restored is people that are selling them now.
Okay.
I've seen some posters around town for a fundraising event that you're responsible for, can you tell us about that?
Excuse me? Yep, we're doing our second annual poker run to benefit the NICU in Worcester. This year is a 90-mile ride, we're leaving from the shop. It's gonna go down through Stafford Springs to Palm, Warren, and to the 200 Sportsman's Club. There'll be raffle prizes, and all the money raised goes to benefit the families at the UMass NICU. My son was a preemie.
And can that be any kind of vehicle? And how does it work?
Yeah, it's open to any registered vehicle, bikes, hot rods, regular everyday cars. It's whoever wants to participate. We have a lot of our customers that don't have the hot rods or bikes, so it's open to anything that's registered. That's it, all the money goes to NICU in Worcester to help the families with kids in the NICU.
Now, I know next door, there's a body shop.
Yep.
I'll ask two questions. One is, who owns that? And two, between your big garage and that body shop, is there anything you guys cannot do to a vehicle?
We can, my brother owns the body shop, Michael Romer, and between both shops, he can pretty much do everything, except for automatic transmissions and interiors, and we have two other shops that we work closely with that help us out on that end.
Excellent. And what do you anticipate will be happening between now and when the snow flies?
Um...
What kind of things do people need most from you on a regular basis?
Usually service work via the hot rods or the regular everyday cars, that's a lot of it there. Plow season, we get into a lot of plow trucks, fix some plows, just getting cars ready for the winter.
How many mechanics, including yourself, do you have there?
There's five of us.
Okay, and how does one make an appointment? Do you call or you just stop in?
You stop in the shop, you can call, and make an appointment that way. Best best probably to stop down.
And if it's an emergency, what's your ability to handle? People often wait until something happens that they wish hadn't happened and now puts them behind the eight ball?
Yeah.
How do you handle emergencies in terms of taking care of business and turnover time?
We usually try to get the emergency ones in real quick, obviously depending on what's going on during the day, but there's usually enough room we can get something in if we have to.
Okay, Mr. Fox.
I would like to say that my wife, Betsy, and I have used Rob's services for the last four or five years. They've always been extremely accommodating and flexible to my schedule and to my wife's schedule. Their technicians are very knowledgeable, very accommodating, and very professional with how they approach their job. So, I would recommend Rob's auto service to anybody.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan.
I'd like to just congratulate Mr. Romer. He took over a long-time existing business. That building was vacant for a little while, but all you do is drive by there and look at the turnover on the vehicles. Like he said, five mechanics, the auto body shop, the used car dealership, they move a lot of product in and out of there, and they took over a business, had a good reputation, but he's made it even better, I think.
Thank you. Mr. Marcy.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going, Steve, was just having something there and not an empty building, you know, that's our, one of our few main corridors where people travel every day and everybody sees your sign. I mean, I go by there several times a day, you know, having a nice car out there, you know, because especially of the classic cars, I love looking at that stuff, so it's kind of neat to see, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Rob, keep going.
It is 80's old classics, like 90's. I like this mid-'70's GMB body car, Steve, how about that?
Keep doing the great work, and it's so convenient to have a body shop, a mechanic shop, that can do all the things you guys can do right in town. And I know, because my wife and I have on occasion called with very little notice and basically said, "Help, all right, this won't happen, that won't happen," so thanks again.
Anything else, Mr. Romer?
I think that's about it.
Okay, we appreciate you coming in.
Your phone number to everybody, Rob, just in case?
What's that?
Your phone number to everybody?
It's 508-943-0009. I have some handouts about the poker run, if you guys would like them.
Great.
Please.
Michelle, we'll put them in the office.
Yeah, good luck with that too, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rob. Nice job.
Glad you could come.
Okay, item seven, we're gonna continue our public hearing. Before I do that, I want to, everybody knows Mr. Brackett, he's been here for a few. I want to introduce John Davis, who is now working as Dudley's co-counsel on the town cemetery matter. So, we're gonna continue this, we're gonna continue the hearing that we previously opened.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
And before we do that, I got you.
I want to go down.
I'm gonna ask, as Mr. Sullivan leaves the table, if Mr. Brackett could explain why he's leaving and recusing himself.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sullivan had advised me that his wife's sister and her husband jointly own a piece of property that abuts the 55-acre parcel that's the subject of this cemetery proposal, and generally the status as an abutter constitutes a conflict, even if there's no intention to create a conflict. The mere status of being in a butter requires that a member of a board or commission recuse himself or herself from that public meeting. So, I have recommended to Mr. Sullivan that he recuse himself not only from the executive session that preceded this open meeting, which was to discuss the litigation, but also to recuse himself from this continued hearing on the notice of intent slash right of first refusal that was submitted by the property owner. So, and we will be providing him with a final opinion after further review with the Ethics Commission about his involvement and potential involvement in this matter going forward.
Okay, thank you.
You want to announce the opening, reopening of the hearing?
Yep, so...
In time?
Yeah, we'll, I'll announce the, we reopen the hearing at 6:56, and I'm gonna pretty much ask for the same instruction I gave last time, and that is, if there is anybody here tonight who would like to be heard, we're happy to hear from you, but we'd like to hear new information that has not previously been discussed or brought up. Mr. Bell, you're conus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. You recall from the last meeting, we, according to the statute, we must notify the property owner of the public hearing, so Ms. Annabelle Meninsky was informed of the hearing, you given the opportunity to be present this evening. We did receive a letter from her attorney on August 1st, and it states that, as you're aware, my client's sale of land to the Islamic Society of Greater Worcester and the town's actions regarding the sale of the subject is a subject of pending litigation in the land court. My client shall abide by any judgment or orders of the land court while that case is pending. My client does not deem it advisable to attend or take a position on the public hearing scheduled for August 8, 2016, this evening. So, the property owner will not be present this evening.
Is there anyone here tonight who wants to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Kathy Hurst, and I live on Camelot Circle. And as I continue to do research on Dudley, I just happened to come across something that I don't believe has been brought up before, something that was new to me. And I, in front of you, you have a paper that has basically three portions, and the first you notice is the map, and there's a satellite view of eastern part of the United States, and a red circle showing the area that is also shown in the inset map, in the green area. And this is called the Last Green Valley. And although you have some information printed on there, I'll just go over what I found by asking the question, what is the Last Green Valley? It is two things. It is the 35 Town National Heritage Corridor in eastern Connecticut and south-central Massachusetts. It is, the Last Green Valley is only half the size of the Grand Canyon National Park, but more than 10 times that of Acadia, the largest national park in the Northeast. Forest and farmland make up 77 percent of its 707,000 acres. The relatively underdeveloped rural island in the midst of the most urbanized region of the nation makes it a resource of local, regional, and national importance. In 1994, Congress designated this region as the Last Green Valley National Heritage Corridor, recognizing the region as a unique national resource. Congress included 35 towns, 26 in Connecticut, and only nine in Massachusetts, but Dudley is one of them. The US Congress recognized the region as possessing significant natural and cultural resources. National Heritage Corridors designations are intended to encourage historic preservation and an appreciation of the history and heritage of an area. Areas considered for designation have specific elements. The landscape must be nationally unique, natural, cultural, historic, or scenic resources. The Last Green Valley is notable for its quality of life and quality of place. Therefore, it is imperative to preserve the fundamental attributes of Dudley, as one of the few, only one of nine towns recognized in Massachusetts, for its lush pastures and woodlands, flora and fauna, protected species, clean streams, rivers and ponds, and forests and farmlands, as well as a rich historic value for our future generations. And gentlemen out in, I'd like to just say that I wanted to bring this to your attention because I feel that since Dudley is recognized to be part of this National Heritage Corridor, that we should try to maintain those places and those areas and resources that are so important that it has been chosen to be part of this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Before he comes up, Greg, have you talked to Kathy about being on the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission for Dudley?
We sure could use a volunteer.
Boy, could we.
Didn't come up, sir.
Please think about it.
We'll see how we do on this.
Okay.
We like your style right now.
My name is Bill Dewire, 165 Corbin Road of Dudley. I just want to first start by thanking the board for your focus and dedication to Dudley. It is very much appreciated. I don't think you hear that a lot, hopefully you do, maybe I'm wrong, but we do appreciate it very much. I am a member of the Last Green Valley, and I've been informed by Lois Bruinog, who is the director of the Last Green Valley, that the town of Dudley did sign a compact back in 2001 with the Last Green Valley, and that piece of corridor of land is under the Last Green Valley. And part of that compact, some of the points is to identify and protect important natural and cultural resources from adverse development impacts, promote and facilitate open space, promote the designation enhancement of scenic roads and views, greenways and blueways, encourage working farms and forest lands, offering economic opportunity, food, fiber, forestry products, et cetera. And I just got a text, but I'm gonna ignore that. But also in her email, she stated, bear with me. Gosh, isn't that awful, I just had it up here. Here it is, right here. She says, "Back in the early days, when Dudley and eight other Massachusetts towns were added to the National Heritage Corridor, all towns signed onto a community compact." Now, she couldn't quite read the signature, but she said it was signed by Brian Germain. I don't know if that name is familiar, but he was the first selectman that says to have signed this compact in 2001, basically committing the town to this compact. So, I just wanted to bring that piece of information up to you as well.
Thank you, Bill.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here tonight? Going once, twice, three times?
Sold.
Okay, so we're not gonna close this hearing, we're gonna treat it in a certain way. Would you help us through that, Mr. Brackett?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and I'll certainly defer to Mr. Davis if he'd like to add to it. We are aware that the land court has scheduled a case management conference on the pending litigation, the six-count suit that's been brought regarding the zoning board decision, and among the declaratory judgment counts is included a count regarding Chapter 61A and a challenge regarding this board's ability to act under the statute. And in discussion with Mr. Davis, it's our recommendation to you and the board that we keep the public hearing open, it be continued to a future date after the case management conference. That way, since this board is a party to that litigation, you can receive a report from Mr. Davis about the results of that case management conference and any developments in the interim, and then a decision can be made about proceeding with further public hearings on the notice of intent.
Could you explain what a case management conference is?
Sure, let me let Mr. Davis take on that part, I'm aware of it.
Mr. Chair, the land court at the outset of any case schedules a case management conference, it's really an introduction to the case for the court. The parties are required to prepare a joint statement identifying issues for resolution, identifying a proposed schedule for future discovery, a proposed schedule for the handling of motions. So, I will be working with plaintiff's counsel to put together a joint statement for submission by the end of this week, and that will be provided to the judge in preparation for the case management conference to be held next week. The case management conference won't last for very long, but the court will at that point go over the proposals of the parties and resolve if there's any differences, and this is, this is more procedural than substantive. The court simply is working out a mechanism for future handling of the case and potential resolution.
Okay, thank you. Before we close it, is anyone, we're gonna be very limited on our questions, does anyone have any questions of our attorneys that are here tonight? Hearing none, seeing none, I guess we'll have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we continue this hearing until after. Attorney Davis and Attorney Brackett have the opportunity to attend the case management hearing regarding the land court case on August 18.
Motion by Mr. Joseph, seconded by Mr. Marcy.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. Today's the 8th, it's on the 18th.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
You have a second?
Second.
Mr. Marcy, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, one abstention.
The vote is 4-0, one abstention?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll be hearing from you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you for coming.
Item nine is the board of health permission to use the Clorinda Wood Fund in the amount of $101 to pay Harrington Memorial Hospital for health services in June 2016.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Marcy, seconded by Mr. Sullivan.
Before we take a vote, I'd just like folks to know that the services and immunizations given were the hepatitis A vaccine, the hepatitis C, two cases, and then vaccine, and Lyme disease, two cases also.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no opposed, any abstentions, no abstentions, motion carries. Fall town meeting warrant, Mr. Bell, you're conus.
Well, members, as you know, we have a fall town meeting scheduled for Monday, October 24. I would depress this evening that the board establish a calendar, opening the town meeting warrant on today, August 8, establishing a closing date of September 19 at 1:00 PM, which is a Friday, and then the posting deadline would be October 10, which means that we'd have to have the warrant finalized and signed by the board prior to that date. So, I'd recommend again that the board adopt the calendar that's here concerning the October 24 town meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Marcy, all in, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstention. Motion carries. Chief Coach Janowski to discuss credit from Verizon regarding radio line issues.
I put these, you have these copies of these emails in your packet, and through you, Mr. Chair, Selectman Joseph had asked me to get the information on the dates of when Verizon came out to repair the Southbridge Tool site as well as the Shepherd Hill site, and basically these just list the dates and the ticket numbers, which are basically the work orders for Verizon. I had spoken of trying to get some credits from Verizon, we actually spoke to a supervisor, well, I spoke to a supervisor, and they seemed pretty receptive to the idea, but I haven't heard anything since then, and we have yet to receive any credits, so as you can see, in the top one was the Shepherd Hill, there was one in 2014, but then there's a list from February of 2016 through June of 2016, which is roughly five months, five months that we had no service, and actually that wasn't, the one on 6/10 wasn't fixed till two weeks later, so you're talking almost six months that that site was out. And if you flip over to the second page, the Southbridge Tool site, there was one date in 2014 and one date in 2015, and then from 5/4 of 2016 through 6/22, which I actually think a couple of ticket numbers are missing, but, because I think the problems at Southbridge Tool actually started in April. I don't know, maybe it took that long to get Verizon to come out, I can't remember. But basically, it wasn't fixed till the second week of July, so you're talking, that one was out for a couple of months. So, I'm looking for at least six months' worth of credit, I mean, maybe I even think we can get a year's worth of credit, we should have it after all the issues we've had with them, and like I said, I got the requested information that Mr. Joseph requested, so...
Let's just continue pursuing it.
I would agree.
Which I intend on doing, but like I said, Mr. Joseph had requested this information, so I wanted...
This is helpful, thank you, chief, as always.
The other, the other thing was, is Roger was supposed to get me an invoice of his work, but I think Verizon should pay his bill too, I shouldn't pay that bill.
For...
Verizon requested that Roger be there, a radio person. Verizon wanted him there to help, and he needs to be, he needs to be paid for some of his time, but I don't feel it should come out of my budget, Verizon should have to pay that bill.
So, during the period, just so everybody knows what we're talking about with Verizon and tickets, well, you explain what Verizon has to do with, why you're so...
Well, basically, our radio system works on a series of phone lines. When we went over to, when we regionalized dispatch, a portion of it was changed over to fiber, basically Webster to this building and this building to the fire department. But seeing, we have a bunch of voting sites throughout town, which are just, how can I explain this in layman's terms? They're basically receiving sites, because there's so many hills and valleys in Dudley, like for instance, Southbridge Tool covers western Dudley, there's a lot of valleys out there and dead spots, so we can communicate between each other on portables and back to dispatch, you have that receiving site out there. But the problem without all the outlying receiving sites is they're on old copper phone wires, and we don't have any other choice, that's the only option we have right now, because Dudley doesn't have fiber throughout the town, and it's too expensive to do it. Number two, you can't use a microwave system, that's expensive, but there's too many hills and valleys, you need direct line of sight for microwave, so your only, your only other option is the, is pretty much the fiber, and I mean, right now, that's just, we don't have an option. So, basically, you have these old copper lines, and we have a more upgraded radio system, so sometimes there's issues if there's a break in the line or a circuit board goes bad, you gotta have Verizon come out and troubleshoot it. You gotta have Verizon come out and troubleshoot it, and that's where we had the issues.
Mr. Joseph.
Remember, do you remember, a year and a half to two years ago, Verizon wanted to come up with a proposal to put a communications tower down off of Schofield Ave on town-owned property?
Was it Verizon?
AT&amp;T.
It was, it was.
It was a South Tower, correct?
South Tower.
So I guess my question is, can we ask the town administrator with the police and fire chief, in highway, Danny, you'd have an interest in this, if they would consider a microwave location that would help solve our emergency communication systems and to include as part of that negotiations for a reduced amount in order for us to use that tower for our microwave communications?
I think we can do that. The issue is that we would be looking for them to put up a tower for us to put a microwave on, that we would be responsible for.
And for them to have it for their own, you know, financial benefit also, which is what they were going to do down on Schofield Ave.
Whatever happened to that Schofield?
I don't know.
It just disappeared.
Yeah, I don't know.
Anything else, Chief?
No, I'm just kinda, I just, we just kinda went on the microwave thing, and I was, I've been told by Verizon and other radio professionals that microwaves won't work that well in Dudley.
Right, it's all dependent on elevation. I think that's why if we looked at if there were a big, if there were a 100-foot tower on the, on a dump site, maybe that would help the situation. Let's see. Let's start there before we ask them to do.
Well, I guess that could be down the road, but I guess what I'm trying, I want to make sure that the town's not, is getting what they should. I think we should get a credit from Verizon, and I think they should pay DNR Radio what they owe him, because, like I said, they requested he was, he be there, not me, not the Dudley Fire Department. So I shouldn't have to pay his bill because Verizon requested him to be there.
Okay.
And it did end up being a phone issue, as you're well aware.
Well, if you, yeah, if you need to be encouraged, we're encouraging you to do that. The issue about the communications tower was just an afterthought, a whole separate issue, based on what you said about the problems we're having. But certainly, I would imagine this board supports your being as aggressive, aggressive as possible to make sure that we don't pay for stuff, for services that Verizon ought to be paying for, all right? And that we get the services that we are paying for.
And I mean, I understand this happened at a bad time, where it happened in the middle of their strike and everything else, but that's not our problem.
That isn't.
That's their problem.
Chief, can you want to do your departmental report? If we don't have any objection, having taken it out of order, we're almost there. Do you have a departmental report tonight?
I sent you my monthly one today.
Yep, just got that today.
I don't have anything to say, tell you. I had one quick thing, just that, speaking of farms, it made me think about it with the public hearing. There's been requests for, as you may or may not know, agricultural burns, if you're zoned farm are allowed year-round, as long as you call. I haven't been allowing them due to the severe drought conditions, and I won't allow any agricultural burns until we get a significant rain. I just wanted to make mention of that.
Mr. Marcy.
Yeah, question for you, Chief. I actually got two people asking me about this. I was going to ask you earlier, but I think it'd be worth it telling everybody. Home-based fire pits, do they need to get a permit? Okay, that's what I said, but I wanted you to.
It's allowed as long as they, there's, and I don't remember off the top of my head, they have to be a certain height, a certain width, and depth, and, but it's about two paragraphs in NFPA 1, which we just switched to a year and a half ago, and they're legal as long as they follow, obviously, they can only burn wood, they can't burn furniture, they can't burn pallets. I mean, I'm talking like natural wood pieces, and that's about it. You can't burn brush in it.
Mr. Sullivan.
Right, Chief, we had a couple issues over here recently, and I think some people have trouble distinguishing between yard debris and debris in their yard.
I don't think they're having trouble at all. I think they just do it and think they can get away with it.
I'm saying, but.
Not afraid to say it.
No, I know, I know you had a couple incidents you had to go out.
Oh, there's been more than a couple.
Oh, I'm talking about over here. You know where I'm talking specifically, and I think the people that are butters are glad with the level of response.
I haven't got called to that address recently.
Right. I think, I think the official visits kinda straighten that mess out.
But, yeah, it's, it's, as long as they're within reason, nobody's going to bother you. I mean, it's not illegal, it's legal according to the fire code now. I mean, the problem is, people get out of control, and they got flames 50 feet in the air, and they're burning pallets and everything else, and then we gotta come put it out. I mean, use some common sense.
Good rule of thumb.
Thanks, Chief. And I would be extra careful now anyway, because just like I said, we're in, we're in a severe drought condition, and we're being saved now by the grace that all, everything's green. That's the only thing. If we don't get any rain before the fall, we're going to be going to brush fires every day, as soon as the leaves start turning.
Right. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Highway Superintendent.
Thanks.
All set?
Welcome back, Dan.
Unadministrator.
It was a slow couple weeks.
So we, I wanted to report that the town has entered into a settlement agreement with the Attorney General's office. This is concerning the open meeting law violation that was filed with the planning board for a meeting on March 25th, 2015. The summary of the settlement is the planning board agrees that it was a violation of the open meeting law. Secondly, that the, be a civil fine issued to the town, the amount of $1,000, which is payable to the Attorney General, and that the planning board will agree to undergo open meeting law training conducted by town council. So I want to make public the fact that this issue has been resolved, and despite what you hear, the Attorney General is vigorously enforcing the open meeting law, and I think we learned our lessons.
Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Chair, to the administrator, that fine is paid by the town, not individuals, right?
That is correct. That's a town fine.
Thank you.
A little bit better news. We, I have mentioned to the board at this last meeting, we've been negotiating with National Grid over some credits that are due to the town for, we buy our power from a solar generation facility up in Orange, Massachusetts, and going through our accounts and reconciling what we've paid both our utility carriers, we're due a credit of $162,991 on our accounts, so.
Good. Wait, 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 did you say 100?
Now they're getting around to it, it'll be fine.
So I expect that that will be paid with interest.
That's even better than my solar panels.
That's a, that's a, that's a good deal. It's, it's, again, a matter of reconciling our payments. I think when I indicated to you, we needed a transfer on that account at the end of the year. We've gone back and we've done a reconciliation with National Grid's cooperation. We've determined, again, this is the amount that's due as a credit back to the town.
So how does, thank you, Mr. Chairman. How does that work? Now, does that go right into the general fund? We'll get a check.
To be determined, but I wanted to let you know the amount that, of it, and we, it's certainly good news. You hear the bad side when the accounts get overspent, you know, and always hear the good side when the town recovers the monies that are due.
Question?
Mr. Joseph.
How can that, now, we don't get the money under mass law, but we do get the credit. Can we ask that a portion of that be credited for this fiscal year and that the remainder be credited in the following or the following two fiscal years? Can we request that?
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
I like that.
So it's your budget, is what you're saying for us?
Right, it'll, what it'll, exactly.
Okay.
Exactly, we should, the other thing I just wanted to mention is I had a meeting with National Grid today, and we're going to pursue LED street lighting. So you see it being phased in throughout Massachusetts as you drive around. The public may notice the bright white lighting is replacing the orange lighting. There are different grants that are available to be able to accomplish that. The time is ripe for us to begin pursuing that for Dudley, at least initially on a phase in, to see how the public accepts it and whether they accept it. But I met with the grid today, and their thought is we should look to target this initially in the areas that have the largest lights. So typically, your average street light is 50 watts, so that's what the orange lights in 90% of the locations around town. Whereas some of our numbered state highways have 250-watt and 400-watt fixtures. So rather than doing a hodgepodge, replacing here and there, we would do an entire street or an entire roadway and replace it with a much smaller fixture, which will use considerably less power. So what we want to do is pursue grants to allow us to buy the fixtures at low cost, no cost to the town, and then going forward, save on electricity, so.
Off of that, Mr. Sullivan.
To the administrator, do we still maintain a list of lights that are out, and are we going to not replace them as the new lights come online?
So, we, we have our list, and we met with an electrical company who, the first company that we dealt with went out of business, and these lights require a considerable amount of maintenance. So where they can be repaired, we will repair those existing fixtures. Where they can't be repaired, then what we'll look to do is replace them with these LED fixtures.
Good. Thank you.
So this won't result in any loss of street lighting?
No, it should actually result in considerable energy savings to the town.
Okay. Mr. Joseph.
Yeah, two quickies. Would you ask the new town planner if he will look into the compact that we joined about being a green community and to see what grants may be available specifically for that purpose? And would you also comment on the August 22nd bridge dedication? Which bridge, what time, and the fact, who it's going to be dedicated to?
I actually don't have that information in front of me, Mr. Joseph.
Okay, it is going to, it is going to be the 22nd.
I apologize. I know it's, uh, the 22nd.
At 9:00 AM.
Correct.
Lower Perryville Bridge.
It's the Lower Perryville Bridge, down near the Connecticut Line, and it's being named in honor of our emergency personnel.
First responders.
First responders, all, yep, yep, all emergency personnel, Dudley, Webster. That's 9:00 AM on the 22nd.
Thank you, sir. I figured you probably wouldn't mind the fact that I was meeting with National Grid today. That probably gave me a little bit of a, little bit of a get out.
Board member comments?
None.
None. Just a quick comment. Isn't it great that we don't have to talk about shutting streetlights off? We're adding to them now, making them better?
Hallelujah, Lord.
Mr. Sullivan.
Just one comment, Mr. Chair. Once again, another resident approached me, and they're very pleased with the turnaround at the beach in the last month. I think that was a, obviously, a longstanding hot-button issue, and we had to take drastic measures, and through the grace of police department enforcement and the media getting the message out, I think that whole neighborhood is extremely happy with the benefit of enjoyment.
Let me, let me jump on that for a second, before we forget, that the first selectman who complained about that and fought for that, meeting after meeting, year after year, was Al Riche. And he still, to this day, says that it took a lot of doing, but that this board has been, has bitten the bullet and has gone ahead where other boards failed to act. You know, but he's very happy, because he fought for that for a long time.
Mr. Marcy.
Yeah, just one more thing. I just wanted to, you know, a little kudos for Danny and his team for doing some brush cutting. I got some kudos over in this area town, visibility on some turns on the tight streets. Much better, Danny, thanks.
That's true, Mr. Chair. I want to echo that. Can't remember where, Danny, remember I sent you the text, the lady had called, and she was like a home health aide or something, not Philo. Where was it? It was off the beaten path, but anyway, didn't even have to mention it to Danny more than once, and the guys were out there, and the person took the time to email me and said they appreciate it. You know, the older lady, the home health aide, I mean, people do notice the little things, as John says, it just lends to our quality.
That's quality of life stuff, guys.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Hang on, Fred's got something.
Fred's got something.
Oh, we had North Main Bridge.
Caput, yes?
Oh, yes. The North Main Bridge is going to be closed for repairs, starting tomorrow, for about four days.
The bridge that goes over the.
Over the French River, where Cemetery Road meets North Main Street, and Webster is going to be blocked while they repair like they did on Main Street last year. Thank you, Fred. Second, Mr. Joseph's motion.
Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
John Root is back.
Somebody.
Bless you.